I think we should still do the finance committee. Are you okay with doing that? Because I want to talk to.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes. You know, I've never been against doing it. There is something I want to, when we get to that, there's something I want to bring up that they did at the fireboard that I think we should do. They're going through the exact same thing.
New fiscal officer?
Yes, and the new one is shadowing just like we're going to. They're also taking and sending her off to some of the better rated, better, you know, people who.
That's a good idea.
And so they're getting a day with, you know.
Some other entity?
Some others. So you see, things aren't done the same. Well, this is the way we've always done it.
Yeah.
Well, and then they also have that contact that they can call. And they don't have to call him.
That's what I heard. There's that contact, and then in March, there's like a seminar to go to.
Yes. When we interviewed, we talked to him about all of that, that there's all of this state training, and we expect, especially in the first year. You have, he's inducting it until they made him come to one this year.
Well, I think that every two, if not three years, he should go just to refresh, if not every year. It can't be that expensive since.
I think the continuing education requirements should be just like it is for any accountant. You got to be there, and you got to be there every year. You got to have so many hours every year. Get your CEUs or.
This whole stretch here is the beyond my property where he's going to put commercial stuff. And then there would be a road that would go to the start of the city right there. I think it's, if I remember right, it comes in in dog legs, but it comes in and then it continues on, and then dog legs for more industrial stuff. Because he's got his trailer business that he's keeping like this hole in for that.
You can see sitting from the road when you, Taylor Road, when you drive by. Kind of got that berm, and then he's got those flat beds sitting back there.
Counsel, are you ready? Counsel, everybody ready? Counsel? Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome everyone to the Batavia Village Council for Monday, November 10th, 2025. Could I have everybody stand up currently, face the front, and for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
In recognition of tomorrow, which is Veterans Day, could I have all the veterans in this air, this house, or this audience, stand currently and on council if you served in the military in any form or fashion? Could you please stand and be recognized? So thank you, thank you. And thank you for the service to our country. God bless you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gibson.
Here.
Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Theobat.
Here.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Stewart.
Here.
Mr. Staton.
Here.
Okay. Approval of financial reports, please.
Can I have a motion to approve the October bank statements and cash journal?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 27th, 2025 council meeting. Mr. Gibson, second?
Second.
Theobat, all in favor?
Aye.
Five oh one, Cole abstained. Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time in the meeting is public comments. People wishing to make comments will be limited to three minutes each. There will be a limit, 30 minutes for the full public comments. We have six people that actually signed up. First on here is Mr. Gardner, or M. Gardner. I figured that's Mike Gardner. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First of all, I acknowledge you for your years of service and dedication to the village. Myself and the other council members elected would like to request that this current council not take any action on any further. So I'll start over. Myself and the other council members elected would like to request that this current council would not take any action on any further annexations, hirings, with the exception of a fiscal officer, or any other major decisions that would commit the village to any long-term financial decisions. We understand completely and respect the fact that you guys are the current council, and you may do as you please. We're just asking for a smooth transition in January without muddying the waters. Again, we are respectfully asking your cooperation in these matters, and as part of this is submitted by myself, Randy Dorsey, Lori Zagar, and Tom Smith. I have a second part of this, since it's been brought to our attention, or at least my attention, that a big concern, referenced the four of us based on our opinions of annexation and growth. We are not opposed to those. We are just opposed to those being going in an incorrect and not a proper way to inform the residents of the village of Batavia. Since I don't have a whole lot of time, I'll go into these annexations that are on the agenda tonight. The first one, the storage unit, don't have a whole lot to say except that's not going to bring all that much income tax to the village of Batavia. And if you do your research on it, there is a discrepancy in their taxes. The other business, Beaches Tree Service, I actually had a conversation with one of those owners today because I went to school with them. This annexation does not and will not provide this village now or within the next few years, any income tax money to the village, period. There are no employees based out of there. There are offices not based out of there. So the village has absolutely nothing to gain at this point by annexing those properties. There are possible plans to develop that in the future, but that's way down the road.
Thank you, sir.
Chuck Gallagher, Clermont County Airport. I want to talk a little bit more about the annexations, just so. Everybody has to vote on this. This is a very important decision tonight. And the Beach Brothers, Beach Tree Service, if you don't know, is located on Taylor Road directly across from the end of the runway. I think their physical address is 4165 Taylor Road. And we're using the runway storage to go around Rob Carmasino's building to get to Beach Brothers' property. But the important thing is, is, and I urge you all to educate yourself on some of these terms, runway protection zone, RPZ, runway safety area, RSA, FAA hazard, air hazard, Part 77, air hazard navigations. Approach zones, there's 34 to one approach zones, 20 to one, and then your approach zone for the instrument approaches. All this stuff overlays this property either on the ground or above it, and it's very critical to the safety of the airport. Not only to the safety of the airport, but for the people flying the aircraft and for the people on the ground. We all have seen the news lately, and we don't need anything like that. So again, you know, I, this isn't something to rush through, and I just, I urge everyone here to really make the right decision that they believe. We can go some history there, and maybe you need to learn some history there, so. And Stanley Claybon owned this field, and the airport was dedicated in 1968. It's been a field ever since then because of the runway protection zone. If you look on the aerial, it's a traffic zone. It looks just like the bean field that's there. So the Beach Brothers bought it in 2019. They were told before they purchased it about the heavy restrictions. They knew about it. So in September of 19, 2019, they went to the Batavia Township Zoning Authority, and we all had meetings like this, and they wanted to build storage buildings all the way to Taylor Road, within the runway protection zone. And then they wanted outdoor boat and camper storage. So they got denied, and went to court, went to court again, went to court again. The final decision was in 2021. They don't have no buildings there. They're in violation, they're in violation where the track is parked. The track is parked up on a big dirt mound up in the air. You can't see it at nighttime. You can, airplane may or may not hit it. There's some very strict restrictions on building in that area. So, and I know here they're saying that they want police and public works up there. I guess they want, you know, one-eighth of a mile of Taylor Road patrolled by village police and plowed with snow up there in front of the building, but ultimately, they're looking for a relaxed zoning code. And I had a guy talk to Brian Beach today, and that's, you know, told the same thing to Mike. That's what they're looking for. So again, I kindly urge all of you to make the right decision and think about this, because it's affecting the community. The airport is a driving economic factor for the village, for the township, and for the county. And, you know, what we're going to decide on how we're going to do this will affect the future. Thank you.
I have a question. So assuming nothing changes, nothing really changes?
Assuming nothing changes?
In regards to the use of the land?
Sure, that's not what they want to do.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
All right. And we can all go, you know, I offered to buy the property twice. We've heard this before on the other stuff, yeah. I've offered to trade property with them. They know the deal. And I like, I do business with them. I like Steve and Brian. They cut down my trees for me on the airport. They do a great job. I have nothing against them. I just, I'm protecting the airport. That's all I'm doing.
I said as long as the usage doesn't change, nothing really changes. Whether, whether it's village or township property, you know, as far as the annexation goes, as long as usage doesn't change, then there's no problems. What's within the constraints of the zoning? What they're doing today, as long as nothing changes, nothing really changes. Whatever, yeah, what he's talking at, what Mr. Gallagher is referring to is what I'm referring to, yes. I would have. Yeah, the federal regulations is what I'm referring to. I would have to ask Mr. Staton for clarification.
And to just kind of finish that, and I don't mean to interrupt, who supplies the building permits for that area? Once if they want to do something different, wouldn't that be the county?
Yes.
Okay. So they, I would think that the county would not, anything that's against FAA since, or anything else, I would think they would say, we're not going to, we're not going to give you that permit. Is, I might, does that sound correct? Especially if they're not compliant with the, you can come back, Mr. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to bring you back with.
The FAA has full authority on airspace, and they leave it to local zoning to take care of the land. And that's how, that's what the federal government, that's how they deal with that.
I know there is, there's height requirements, though.
There's definitely height requirements on here. There's different, there's different angles, and it goes out.
Yeah.
There's a lot of, it's very involved. That's all I'm saying. It's very involved. But again, the ground portion of it, which, there is a ground portion of it, the RPZ and the RSA, is, they leave it up to local zoning authority first.
Okay.
And then it would hit the county department, and then the airport, or the Clermont County zoning board, airport zoning board. But we need to all work together in the beginning. It would be nice.
Mr. Geis?
Thank you.
Could you tell us what this property is currently zoned and what the zoning category will be when it comes into the village, if it comes in?
I think both of the properties are zoned industrial.
And they, if we, if we annex, they would stay industrial?
That's correct.
And in, due to the proximity of the airport, I know at one time I've read a report that the county has kind of an overlay that places restrictions within a certain radius of the airport. But because there was never a need for that to be recognized in our zoning, would that be recognized by our zoning with those restrictions, or how does that work?
If you're talking about building department restrictions, then those would, those certainly would apply.
It appears that this document was a committee that met many years ago and haven't really kept up on keeping it all up to date and everything, but I see nothing in there that shows that they vacated it, or if maybe Mr. Moore's looked into whether that's ever been vacated or not.
I can truly say I've not looked into whether or not it's still in place, but I can echo Mr. Gallagher to say that there's going to be no construction that the FAA deems to be within proximity of the airport that's going to violate FAA regulations. That's going to trump county, township, village, personal opinion. We're not trumping the FAA, and that remains in place.
While you're already answering some questions, Chris, maybe you could explain to me just what, something that came up makes it an emergency and that we can't take three normal readings in the 60 days to take care of it?
Certainly. So Ohio Revised Code, when it comes to type two annexations, provides in Section 70923 that a municipal corporation, upon presentation of the annexation document, shall, and it provides a period of time that requires it to be passed by an emergency. And I'm looking down, I believe it's 20 days. It might be 25, and I apologize. I had it just in front of me, but I flipped pages. But it provides that the village shall adopt the ordinance saying what services the village provides. Once that goes in place, a village has no requirement to provide additional services, but it is a, effectively, a mandated timestamped ordinance that requires action. That's what makes it an emergency, is the operation of the statute.
But you kept saying shall adopt. We shall take action on it. It doesn't require us to adopt it, correct?
Thank you. 703... dot, excuse me, 709.023, parence, capital C, close prints, provides within 20 days after the date the petition is filed, the legislative authority of the municipal corporation to which annexation is proposed shall adopt an ordinance or resolution stating what services the municipal corporation shall, will provide, and an approximate date by which it will provide them. That's, that's the shall language I'm referencing that creates a statutory emergency.
But that doesn't require us to actually approve the annexation, or does it?
It requires us to pass an ordinance saying what services we're going to provide. I'm not trying to be flippant with you. It's the, the... We pass this, it then goes back for consideration. But we have to say what ser, we have to say what services we would provide. In other words, they don't want a parcel carved out for which it sits there as an island. So the requirement is immediately, they want to know what service will be provided. It then goes back for further consideration and comes back to us. But at this point, we have to consider an ordinance. I would suggest if asked, we have to pass an ordinance that says these are the services the village can provide to the property. I will make that suggestion and, as always, leave open to parties who vote how they vote. It's not my place to say.
Any other questions from any of the council members? Mr. Fisher?
Good evening, everyone. First off, Veterans Day tomorrow. Thank you for all the veterans. Marine Corps birthday today, 250 years. I don't think we have any Marines in the house, do we? That's too bad. We do? Hey, Semper Fi Dallas. Godspeed. Wow, a little bit before my time, but that's pretty cool. Right on. Hey, real quick, for this annexation thing, I think we could, everyone sees it for what it is. I truly think it's a manufactured emergency. I don't know of other annexation processes where you have to go ahead and do it in a certain day. I don't know why it can't go through the normal annexation process where there is actually a process and we review this. Honestly, I really don't have any skin in the airport. With that being said, congratulations to the four over there. Pretty awesome. And I think there was some misreading of the room. You know, we went ahead and called folks the vocal minority, but there was actually apparently a silent majority in the village here that didn't like the way that things were going. With that being said, I think you guys might have wanted a little bit more if it wasn't for those flyers being passed out, by the way. I think those were probably, probably took 20 votes from you. But anyways, moving on, I was disappointed to see the fire levy didn't pass. I was actually, and I watched, you know, Randy Perry speak at the State House, and he went ahead and spoke to, you know, kind of the interactions that the village had with the fire. We'll just pass a levy, no big deal. How, you know, that levy failed because of this group right here. It wasn't Bill Albright's big scary sign. Sorry, Bill. You know, it really was the village. You guys paved the road for the levy to fail with all the money you've stolen from the fire department are taken or diverted. We got this little flyer right here that we said, summary of TIF CRA district impact. Steve, you like stuff like this. You go ahead and look right here. It's increasing by about 25% per year. So you guys put this on your website, and you're proud of this. And it actually shows, your own consultant went ahead and put something on the website where it showed the TIF agreements are relatively stagnant, but every year you guys divert another 25% from the fire department. And why didn't you guys put something like this for the school? You went from $29,000 in 2022, $42,000 in '23, and in 2024, up to $56,000. You guys, every year, you guys are diverting another 25% of revenue. Township have a TIF, right? 12%. 50, it's going to be 50, it is, it is, it's fact. It's fact. I'm a data guy. 50% of all the properties in the village are going to be abated here within the next year. You guys, you guys, you guys are getting about $2 a service for every $1 you pay toward the fire department. And I, your consultant would have showed that, would have shown that. If there was like, and I got you for that, I would have liked to think if you guys paid for that. Well, 100%. Well, hey, too little, too late, because you guys already got that levy failed. I got about 30 more seconds here. I appreciate.
You need, but when it comes to the fire department, I just came from the fireboard meeting?
Yes.
And the fireboard, you can ask Mr. Albright over there, rattled off what precincts they did poorly in. Not a single one of them was a village precinct.
Of course not, because their taxes aren't going to go up, because you guys are already getting a sweetheart deal. And 50% of the properties in the village, like, you see, their taxes only go up by like one-fifth or one-sixth of the township residents. Of course, you're going to vote for every tax. That is a fact. You can look at it. I mean, Kyle knows his taxes. He only pays about like one-fifth of everyone else pays for the actual value of the property. Of course, like, for my house, right? Like, my house, my house is going to go up, which I voted for the levy. My house is going to go $800,000, $800 a year, right? A $470,000 house over there, their taxes go up $123. Okay, so how do you handle the, how do you, how do you handle, how do you handle the the $2 of service you're getting for every $1 spent? That, that's the story. You guys are getting a good deal on fire department. You guys allowed this. You voted no. You voted no. The 6-0 voters, you guys screwed the fire department out there. You let them paint a narrative, which is true that you guys are taking more than you're given, and that's a fact, and you should be ashamed of yourself for taking a crap on public safety.
Thank you, sir. Oh, gosh. Who did number four after Mr. Fisher? Number four? It was a signature. Oh, Randy. I'm sorry, Randy, you did it in cursive this time. I know, teach cursive. Well, I should have known cursive on that one. Thank you, sir. Sorry about that. I know.
I, is this thing on? Hello, hello? All right. I just have some concerns about the, the annexation of the properties across from the airport. You know, with, let's, one point would be is if these two properties would become annexed, what percentage of property is necessary for you guys to annex in the airport? It's a government, it's a government property. You guys did it all over the other places. What, how do we not know you're not going to annex in the the airport? It's county property. You'll be, you have it on at least two full sides.
Me too.
Second of all, you know, why are we always playing mom and dad with the township? If the township said no, why, in this situation, why do we care? Why, township told them no, and now they, the owners. And what, what services do we believe we're going to provide them? And we, we believe that that service is better all the way out there than what the township could provide them? So you're saying that the village had no part in helping them? I feel like we're just playing mom, dad. I think this is one reason this council gets a bad name is because we continue to do things that we should keep, mind your own business. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Albright, Marvin Lemon, outsider again. Congratulations, you guys. I hope you do better in these four that are leaving. This annexation thing is just for spite. Jason's been crying and crying, airport views won't affect the airport. Ten guys down there, he's got it out for Chuck. He's going to annex type two. There's no reason for a type two. Good night. Make them do a type one. Go through the county commission. Go through the county commission. You're gonna get one guy working at a store. You guys annex, see about, you annex every public building around here, the jail, the courthouse, the power road, permit, central, everything up there for that 1% income tax. You're not getting that out of this. You're gonna build a little outhouse right there just so they can't span that runway. That ain't even a future thing. Just a spike. You guys got the opportunity to say no. Do something right before you leave. Jesus Christ. Aaron Gladsey showed up at the fire board meeting. You said you was gonna get with him, you was gonna talk to everyone at the council. I've been coming to these every meeting, not one meeting about the fire department up here. Might go in that shady back room, you might go in his little corrupt office over there. That pot payment is public phone. It's not your select phone, not your little Ray's thing. Public phone, for a public fire department that just lost a levy. You need to talk about it up here. Not back there, not upstairs, back here, and you ain't done it. That's a total failure on you guys. Total failure. You wanna come back with numbers last meeting, that was total bullshit. You didn't need to show up. You didn't even show up. Neither, neither village official, I don't care. Neither village official was there right before the levy did. Didn't have numbers. That was a month after the meeting before you said you was coming back with numbers. You wanted to call him into the meeting. Now you put it off till January. I wish I could go down to the tax building and put my taxes off. Wait till the grass starts growing again, people. It don't work like that. You all owe them back pay. Dude, you're, you're scamming out over there in Streamside. I ain't got the numbers for the fire department handy, but I can go to the truck and get them. You're scamming out, dude. You got 400 of them scamming out. Probably if you all paid, like everybody else paid out here, they wouldn't have needed a levy. It's truly pathetic. Do the right thing.
I'm gonna just make a comment because it was enlightening to me. I had a conversation with somebody who is close to the fire department in regards to the money that the village has diverted in the five years since we began doing what we're doing. And it was made very clear to me that this individual believes the problem to be a state problem. Because even if we paid, wrote them a check today for everything that is perceived that we have screwed them out of, it would not help them because of the TIFs that the county put on five properties. Our split, our split, what is our split? No, what is our split in percentage with township responsibility? Our 17% versus their 83% diversion. This individual told me our check would do no good. I said, then please take it. It's something. That is out of the mouth of a man in uniform who knows what he's talking about. So I don't disagree with you, but we can't take the blame.
You can take the blame, but that's your state bullshit. He's on the fire board, she's on the fire board, and we're coming back with numbers, and it's total bullshit.
You guys, you guys are taking 7% of their budget coming from the village. 17% of the service.
You know how much property values in town?
You, you guys, you guys are getting more than you're paying for. You should pay your...
About 87%.
4%. It doesn't, they don't chart by run, it's a levy service.
You guys are getting more than you're paying for.
It'll never be equal because of it is small and doesn't have the businesses that...
It is more than it works because you're ending up paying the same things. If it's at 17% right now, it's right up to 18%, and then that number's not gonna work.
You look at property values, townspeople, villagers, the townspeople not paying.
Everyone's heard the same bullshit, you said it over and over again. You're getting more than you're paying for, it's only gonna work because you're giving away.
That's oversimplification.
No, it's not. It's fact.
Thank you. Brian?
I don't know how much time's left of the 30 minutes. Good God, Mr.... I know, I, I always get more. Hold, hold on, Chip, you hit the button already. This is fantastic. This is exactly what we've needed. Like, okay, we're yelling back and forth or aggravated, whatever, you take that away. This is fantastic. This is debate. I am begging you to let me or anyone else with the remaining 30 minutes, we've never used all 30, to get it, hold on. I understand, I'm gonna keep talking after 30 minutes. Because there are some things that Mr. Statham made a comment, Mr. Gibson, I actually wanna comment on your, your stuff as well. But anyway, on this agenda tonight, the, the annexation. That property, the beach property, like I said, Mr. Meyer, three court cases. They went to the township, it was denied. They filed three court cases, an appeal, all of them were denied. In case people didn't understand exactly what Chuck was talking about, the FAA controls the air, not what is on the ground. So if the township does not allow something on the ground, but the village will, then they'll build it on the ground, and then the FAA is left to deal with what is on the ground, what do we do with it? So my question is rhetorical, of course. If they were denied three times with the township, why in the world would they come to the village to be annexed? Secondly, the services that you guys are gonna provide, Mr. Moore referenced, let's say public works, you know, plowing the streets or police protection, I will make a FOIA request to the county or whoever will have these records. How many times has the police had to go to these properties that they are lacking with the protection they have now for police reports or whatever else? Central joint, I'll ask the same thing, and public works, like are their streets not plowed? So are they lacking something that they need to approach you guys to get for an annexation? I have a feeling the answer's gonna be no. There's a backstory or another reason why they wanna be annexed. As far as the, the recent elections, not only did the village voters speak, the township voters spoke with the elections. Mr. Statham, you had referenced, um, who voted for the fire levy, who didn't? All of you guys have kinda echoed the idea that there's a bunch of township residents coming down here to speak about village matters. One could argue maybe the township residents, I'm not gonna say more educated in, as an insult, but maybe, um, you, I guess my, I guess what I'm saying is, maybe they're affected more, not, not necessarily more, but what if, what if we're just aware? Okay? I, I, I agree. And I know it seems like, because I own the property that is gonna border this Airport Views, that makes sense that I'm gonna be a loud voice. But I've said before multiple times in this meeting, think of me as an advocate for Claremont County taxpayers. Because someone as far away from my properties you can get, but still in Claremont County is affected by the tax-abated decisions that you guys make. And that's been my point the whole time. But just because township residents may have voted no against this fire levy, that doesn't mean that like all the village people, uh, think that it's a great idea. I, I actually disagree with that. I mean, I didn't wanna vote for it, but I did, because... That doesn't work. I, I totally agree. And I said it doesn't work because I've experienced it, which then relates back to your comment, Jason, and I, and I do wanna hit on this. I worked for Delhi Township Fire Department 2004. Our levy failed, we laid off 55 or 60 firefighters, shut down two fire stations. And one of our things that our union and firefighters came up with is like, just don't buy a Coke, you know, twice a week. People didn't give, give a shit about Coke. They're like, I, I can't afford it. But back to you, Mr. Gibson. You made a comment about the state funding fire departments. I made a comment in the very first annexation meeting about the Airport Views, uh, annexation, the type one, where they were able to listen to us, county leaders, about it. And I men- mentioned the Governor Kasich for the state of Ohio. He removed the state funding to fire departments. It just happened to be right before the levy I referenced that failed in Delhi. So they removed $500,000 from Delhi Township and every other fire department in the state of Ohio. That was funding they required, counted on from the state. It just so happened to coincide with a levy that was meant for seven. Delhi stretched to 11, but when it was put on the ballot, if it failed, they're in the red. I'm assuming Central Joint is in the same boat. If they lost the funding from the state, which you referenced, hold on, let me finish.
I just wanna clarify what I meant by that. This individual's talking about the tools provided by the state to counties and municipalities that have been used that have put them in the position they're in today. Not, not...
The tool, the bar is like...
TIFs, CRAs, TIFs, CRAs specifically.
Okay.
It was referring to making changes to those things at state level because they have caused the problem and the pinch that they are in.
Okay, but would you...
That, that's what I was, not, not the state's money, but the state's rules.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. It's impo- it's important because residents, like, before all this crap hit the fan with the village and stuff, I didn't know any of this, these things. It's just like, oh, they want a new levy. But there is always a backstory. And that Governor Kasich with the state of Ohio with the levy I'm talking about, with Central Joint or the tools you're talking about, it is in a bucket of funding that people don't pay attention to, which is normal, I didn't pay attention to it. But it does affect when levies get on the ballot. And if, at that time, those things hit to put a levy on the ballot at the same time that all of us have been in the news and online for a year and a half, and you guys are giving tax abatements away, it just, it doesn't look good. It's, it's the same, um, consequences we felt in Delhi. When they took $500,000 away, we built, uh, fire stations with TIF money that were huge, and then less than six months later... It just, it doesn't go well. And as far as, I appreciate the back and forth and obviously the, over the three minutes, but this is...
I, I'll add, I'll add to that, the comments that were made.
Say that again?
So, so, 32 being opened up.
Okay.
There's infrastructure that was paid for by the TIFs, which is also propagating the problem.
So you're saying taking like all the traffic lights out?
Creating, creating the flow, which is creating the tension that we're getting out here by developers. I'm saying, I'm not saying anything about that. I'm saying this individual clarified that the money that should've gone to the fire department paid for the infrastructure. County chose to use the money in union township and open up 32. But that money that was diverted from the fire department to do that is a compounding problem today because of the development that's coming through township and the opportunities to the village as well.
And that, and... This has, this has to happen, this conversation has to happen. It has to happen. State record, 32 you were making comments of. I was a fireman 26 years. Maybe this fireman knew the details. I'm, I would bet against it. But here, here's what I'll say to the opening up 32. Every single person in this crowd that has been against your guys' decisions has zero problems with 32 being opened up. Because we've said it before in this meeting for years, there's only one place left. We are fine with people coming out here. We are fine with development. You guys just have to make it the right development. And original proposals with cottages and, and single-family homes with 6,000 square-foot lots next to every property that has at least an acre is BS. Jason, you and, we, all of us have the same ideas in our heads, you guys are taking a different path with 6,000 square-foot lots in townhomes. I am fine with those traffic lights being through there. If I had to drive through all those traffic lights going to work, I would've gone crazy. It's fantastic. We have an opportunity. Batavia Township has an opportunity. The village has an opportunity. And the township residents, who you guys don't really care to have come down here, will support the little village and your decisions if it makes sense. But this crap that Airport Views with a developer that does not live in Batavia Township or the village, or some airport with tax-abated apartments with a developer in New York wants to come here, Batavia Township residents aren't gonna support Batavia Village's decisions.
Thank you, Brian.
We frickin' come together and just say, hey, let's make Batavia frickin' fantastic and describe it as a village and a township that we all agree on. Every person that's been in opposition will be on the ballot. We've said it for a year and a half. We are here to support you.
Thanks, Brian.
But if you pass this shit tonight on a frickin' emergency vote and take the opportunity for the voters to file another referendum that was stolen from them before this election, after the election, I wasn't finished, Mr. Meyer. I was not finished. I was not finished. If you do another emergency vote on this bullshit and take our opportunity to put it on a referendum like you did after the voters voted here and voted in the township, all hell is gonna break loose? Wow.
Thank you.
We can think of every new station down here.
Thank you, Brian.
Do not pass.
I don't, I don't use this. Thank you, Brian.
Do not pass.
That's, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Evening, council. The October 2025 report. On October 10th, Batavia Police Department had its police night out. The event was an enormous success. The police department and the village of Batavia, uh, the event proved to be a wonderful opportunity to give back to the community. There were no police issues during the event, and we look forward to next year's event. Police department would like to say thanks to all the village businesses, volunteers who took time out to help us make the event a success. Uh, on October 23rd, the police department participated in the trunk or treat put on by OSP. Uh, it was very well attended, and again, also served for another opportunity to give back to the community. On October 31st, the police department set up in front of village hall for trick or treat. Another great opportunity to give back to the community, um, while having a chance to interact with the children of the village. We were able to get out hot dogs, walking tacos, treats to all who visited, um, and it was sponsored by the Batavia Police Association. Lastly, obviously, there are some things that are going on, uh, here tonight, uh, that may give people pa- pause about this, but I am asking, asking council, permission to enter into a contract for Axon body worn cameras and/or tasers, uh, for 2026. Uh, our body worn camera contract will expire on January 1. If not renewed prior to that, we will lose some access to software that we use to maintain our body cam footage, saved footage, uh, for current cases and new cases. If we renew the contract prior to the expiration, it allows us to take advantage of some discounts offered by Axon. If we renew the contract prior to the expiration, it allows us to take advantage of some discounts offered by Axon. Um, as Axon contracts always go up in the beginning of year. They do it every year because they got the market cornered. Everybody goes to Axon. So it'll give us an opportunity to take advantage.
Chief, if I may, and the cameras you're talking about, I just, I know the answer. It's obvious, but I wanted to have it said out loud. It's essential for the safety of our police officers.
Yes.
And, and, and to have full functionality, we need to keep the contract in place.
Yes.
And if we do that, we achieve a discount.
Yes.
Okay, I'd, if anyone wants my legal opinion, it's an emergency. I just wanted, thank you, chief.
Uh, and as far as tasers is concerned, same thing. Uh, our officers are currently carrying tasers that were offered, uh, to the police department starting in two thousand and three. We're talking about twenty-two years old. While the tasers aren't something that are used on a daily basis, twenty-two-year-old technology isn't something that I like to see our men and women carrying. I want to protect them. I also want to protect the community. And this is just another way for us to do it. So that's that. Anybody have any questions for me? Yes, sir. And if we do something, if we do enter into a contract, it will not go into effect till twenty twenty-six. Sad now to get the discounts, but it won't go into effect until next year.
Here, that's not in the agenda?
This is a motion that's not an ordinance, so it doesn't need to be an emergency.
Not, not as an emergency, but I just want it noted that it would qualify should we need, need extreme action. I, I apologize.
Do we need a motion to approve this?
Yes, yes.
I move, I move to re-up the contract for the body cam prior to the first seer.
Is there a second? By role, Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Theobald.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. State.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, especially for the trunk or treat again, thank you for everything you did.
Thank you, mayor. So, since the last meeting, my office has handled some personnel matters for the village. I have drafted and provided, uh, which council has in front of the review, a draft agreement with respect to the proposed, uh, fiscal officer. That agreement does not change the fiscal officer's status in Ohio, i.e. that of an at-will employee. It simply just provides the basic tenants of employment should council wish to go in that direction. I just want everyone to understand that's not a contract for employment. It is simply, I'm going to call it an agreement. It's simply delineating, uh, those terms and conditions of the at-will employment. Um, with respect to pending nuisance matters, uh, there are two matters going on. One is the McNew matter, which is set for court hearing on November twentieth. At that time, we will appear, uh, with the defendants at the courthouse in the hopes of resolving the matter uh, by sitting down, speaking together and seeing if we can't come up with a workable plan to clean up their property. Uh, as I like to do, I just want to tell everyone I did drive by the CRT property before council tonight. Uh, an initial pass, it looked good, and then I realized that the properties on the drive area, excuse me, the cars in the drive area had been pushed back. So when you drive right by it, it looks clean, but when you count eighteen vehicles, they're just kind of double stacked toward the back of the property. Uh, I didn't count any behind the fence because the fence was closed today and did not count the two that are parked directly in front of the building. So you can call it twenty. I'm going to call it eighteen. Still in excess of the number he's supposed to have. Uh, that matter goes back in front of Judge Brock on December second for update and for further, uh, scheduling. Uh, at that, those are the big matters that I handled, uh, for the village this month. Other than I do have a request to go to executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section one twenty-one dot twenty-two, parentheses G, close parentheses, parentheses, three close parentheses, which is a meeting with council to discuss pending or imminent litigation pertaining to the village.
Have a motion to, uh, go into executive session.
Second.
By role, Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Theobald.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. State.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your patience. You want to just back into regular session, please?
Can we have a motion to return from executive session?
So many.
One second.
By roll, Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Mr. State.
Thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Geis.
Thank you. Tonight, the mayor is going to present a candidate for the fiscal officer position, and that will be heard along by council. On this, the CRA, I removed the third reading of the CRA from this meeting, and the reason is because I wanted to have the opportunity to have a, you know, a conversation and negotiation with the fire department on that. It's my understanding at the fire board meeting that they postponed that for a period of time. So I believe I'm going to move forward with the CRA and bring that information to council at the next meeting later this month. Christmas in the Village, this event will occur on Saturday, December 6th, a change from the years past, which has been on Friday. There will be hot dogs and refreshments served at 5:00 p.m. Their carriage rides begin, and at 7:00 p.m. the tree lighting will occur. On Herald Road, the public works improvement on that, the temporary improvement seems to be working as planned on that. I haven't heard of any specific police violations or issues with that. The last thing I want to talk about is what the council had talked about previously is the annexation that's on the agenda tonight. There are two ordinance, ordinances on there as background to this, as was stated. These are property owners that came to the village and asked the village to consider the annexation to their property. There's no pre-annexation agreement, and we haven't had any specific discussions about any abatements on those properties. In talking about a couple of things, one, with them not coming, with them coming to the village for that, as had been done with Harvest Meadows and Streamside, the village had agreed to pay for the legal fees associated with the annexation proceedings in that. And one of the things that was mentioned in discussion with the audience tonight was the fact that there are taxes due on one of the properties. And as a condition of the final acceptance of that, we've told that the owner of the property that all taxes have to be paid and are current at the time of the annexation. As Mr. Moore talked this evening about the ordinances tonight, there is a statutory requirement to move forward with any annexations to their type two, that there's a 20-day limit on that, so they're required to be passed as an emergency to move forward, and that file then is transferred that to the county commissioners in the package. That in no way completes the annexation on that. The village still has the opportunity after the commissioners move to approve or not, that comes back to the village, and Mr. I'm not giving a legal opinion, but Mr. Morgan, child, and there is a, an ordinance that's required for the village to accept the annexed property into the village. So the items before council tonight are not to approve the annexation, but we're approving the process to go forward to the commissioners for their review.
That is correct.
Mr. Geis, how long do the commissioners have to prove that or not?
I believe it's a 90-day period. So I would not anticipate that this action would come before the currently seated council for approval.
Are you talking about like a third-party entity, like outside of a government entity?
I mean, the village will not agree.
No.
Yes. The village don't, the village will not agree to pay their taxes.
Now, if you wanted to go pay their taxes, I think they'd be okay with it, but the village will not pay their taxes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be a lawyer here. Until it comes before the village, council can't weigh rule on that matter. And as Mr. Geis has said, it probably won't come before this comprised council. So you hear what everyone here is saying? Ask that matter again, and...
What happens if you guys vote not cast as on emergency to the annexation of the second, I don't know what we're gonna do, what happens if Mr. Moore, does that replace by the property? Or is it ranked? I, I think that might go to Mr. Moore because it is in the Ohio statute. If you can answer me.
I can. Tonight's vote is on the services to be provided, not annexation into the village.
That's a different property.
Which, you're, yeah, you're looking at, I assume, 1255. Which one?
1555, 25.
25.
Let me, let me grab a copy of it. Let me send it down. No, thank you. Thank you.
If you guys approve, give us a second.
We're not voting on this, correct?
You want to, however, that one?
Yeah, it's on everybody. Yeah, this is, we're not voting on this. Okay, excuse me. So, tonight, we are voting on the services, and then we vote to send it back to the commissioners. We're not voting to accept annexation.
For the 1554, they have 25. Relative to services, you write, that's the part of the...
Correct.
I'm asking about the next one now.
Give the one I sent down to you.
It might be better.
If you guys are held by state to, in a requires, actually pass services.
Again, yes.
This is part of the process, like, hey, they want to be annexed. You guys have to provide services, what are they gonna be? Yes. If that's an emergency, whatever. We have 20 days, yes. I mean, I think it should be secondary. We'd have to have a meeting three times a week.
It's not required to be an emergency. It's required that we respond within 20 days.
And there has to be an emergency. And you're reading that right from the Ohio revise code.
Thank you. So my opinion stands. Council, council votes on services. Council is not annexing property tonight.
Chris, you know, in, in my experience on this, the second, the second ordinance is the village, and I'm not giving a legal opinion.
You're not?
It's the village consenting to the petition, that the village has knowledge of the petition, they're consenting to allow the petitioners...
Correct, correct, but the, correct, I'm sorry, but the question asked was, are we annexing tonight? We're not annexing tonight. That, correct. The question was asked, are we annexing tonight? We're not annexing tonight.
So first reading, first reading is, is what serves provided. Second reading is that it is being sent to the county commissioners.
That's right.
They would respond, and then it comes back to council to approve the annexation. So if you, you, are all of you aware what the terms are of that annexation? So if you approve the second one, say, yes, we're fine. Are all of you aware of that, that the, what are the details of it?
Sure.
If it's a type two, you guys are all aware of that? If it's a type two, yes. Okay. Have two requires, commissioners approve, put it, is all they make checkbox? Yes. And Mr. Geis, I believe you're saying that, let's say, approval, it comes back to you guys, and you have the ability to take it back through the law?
Come, it comes back to the village for acceptance.
And, and you don't need to hear it? And isn't the county commissioners on a type two rather limited in what they can?
County commissioners are, county commissioners are rather limited on a type two. That is the whole point of a type. Again, there's type one, type two. Type two is, generally speaking, requires or provides for less input by the county.
If it comes back to council, can you guys, is that what it is now?
Again, when it comes back before new council, I will be happy to review it and provide an opinion as to whether or not council can or should. It will be council's decision at all times individually as to how to vote.
Is there any, any services, because that's lawyer, lawyer's duty.
No, no, it's completely lawyer's. I mean, I want to be fair to you. I mean, I want to be fair to you.
Okay, I get it. Is there any circumstance in which the county approves it comes back to you guys? That you can't, like, you're screwed, even if hated, you guys...
Yes, yes. And there's, is there any circumstance under which it's going to come back, and people are going to say, no matter what, we shouldn't approve it? Yes. Until it comes back, I can't tell you those circumstances. So if you ask me, what happens on either end of an agenda or a spectrum? The answer is, all things are possible until they happen.
What's the best way to figure out what voters like? The answer is the type 1.
The answer is to let council, who was voted to deny.
If I may, the...
We're a representative democracy, so therefore, the elected officials...
Sure, sure.
Even if it is, let's say you guys, people who the opposition love, this gets approved, it comes back, even if they hate it because we all love the county members, are they screwed into approving it if the county has to approve?
I believe, I believe he's...
Can you guarantee these newly elected people have the ability to deny it?
No, I can't, I can't, I cannot guarantee anything until it properly comes back from the county. And, and the question...
If there is an opportunity for anyone to be screwed into making a decision because of the law, then, then don't send it, make them do it type 1.
So, 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 again, and, and I mean this, I'm not looking to debate because, no, because we're getting to a bigger issue. You're asking me, which parts of the law do I respect? And the answer is, all of them. And the legislature's provided for type 1 and type 2. So I'm not going to be Solomon here and say, I'm going to split the baby, but I'm also not going to say which baby I like better. I'm going to say, if you meet the requirements of the law, as an attorney, I respect the legislature's decision-making. And again, that's, I recognize when I say these things, people go, lawyers being lawyers. I get it, but I do respect the legislature, I respect the courts, and when they make those decisions, when you ask me, which ones do I not like? I'm going to say, it's council to decide which ones they do and don't like. It's going to be new councils to decide. And if they ask me for opinions at that time legally, which way they can or can't go, I will provide those, but I cannot sit here and tell you, I can't tell you type 1 is better than type 2, because I think they're both great.
This is also not a change. Brian. Okay, Brian, yeah. Brian. Brian, the, the, Brian. Brian, you're asking the same question four times. It's been answered. I get that you don't...
Then what's the answer, Mr. Meyer?
He's given to you three times. He's the legal expert.
Brian, I agree with...
Remember, Brian? Oh, sorry.
Hold on. Brian, I agree with part of what you said. You said, are we screwed and forced to be voting a particular way? No, 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 that's happening tonight. With you, the back-and-forth Mr. Moore and I had earlier, where he said, you have to approve this because of the 24-day limitation that the state put on it. Well, Ohio's a home-rule state. That means we get to rule right here, except, exceptions established by the state and the courts. What Mr., what Mr. Moore is saying is, they've established those exceptions here by putting arbitrarily short timelines on it to force us to vote. Now, I've already told Mr. Moore, he's going to get to defend me if he has to, because I'm sick and tired of saying, I have to vote for something, and then at the same time telling me I have to vote a certain way. If it's a vote, it's a vote, and it's a free vote, and I'm placing my free vote of no tonight.
There's also...
All of you have that same ability, Mr. that you have.
They would have to defer to, he can represent Ohio, or he can represent the other...
So if that's a 20-day requirement, you're not forced to vote yet. Yours is required to vote within 20 days, just for help.
Hey, so, so the law, I'm sorry, mayor, the law is written, says shall. Legal interpretation says shall is the same as must.
Or and/or.
Shall. I'm going, I'm, I, no, I do not have to answer that question. I will, I will give you a different analogy. Because on this issue, it may become important, the question you're asking, and I will not provide an answer that might sway council. But I can submit to you that in my legal capacity, I have given advice to members of various legislative bodies that they could do something legally and how to do it. And I will submit to you that with a change of council, I was asked, how do we do something that, I think in fairness, was 180 degrees? And it was a two-part question, is it legal? The answer was yes. How do we do it? I provided that input. Because the law provides that they can. The law provides what you can and cannot do. We, meaning me in this case, will not substitute for that. We, meaning everyone here, should not. However, I'm not elected for office, I'm not elected to office. Council members have, from time to time, told me, I respect your opinion, I don't respect your opinion, whatever it is, but I'm going to vote my conscience. And I say, that is your right and your elected duty. I can do no more than that, because I'm not ultimately the decision-maker. I can only provide input to specific questions as asked.
Thank you, sir. And let's go ahead, that's Brian. We're going to go ahead and go, the council knows what they're going to do, I'm very sure, by now.
They don't even know the, the opinions yet. We don't know exactly, shall, ask for shall, second reading.
I think we should just let the, whatever, this is about a legislative body. These are the legislators, they're going to make their decision regardless, whatever they think is best for the village.
Are they given all the information, what the...
So, go ahead, council, if you want to go ahead and read that, um, read that.
We've got an ordinance approving services to be provided to annex territory. Ordinance 1554-25, a first reading passed as an emergency. So, do I have a motion to declare an emergency and waive the three readings on ordinance 1554-25?
So moved.
Meyer Gibson. By roll, Mr. Gibson. Ms. Cole. Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Staton. We have a mo, I need a motion to adopt ordinance 1554-25, providing services to annex territory. Do I have a motion to adopt? No, we, we passed, you got to adopt after we, after we did the emergency.
I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1554-25.
Mr. Gibson. By roll, Mr. Gibson. Ms. Cole. Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Staton. Motion passed 5-1. I have an ordinance concerning consenting to the annexation of 29.884 acres. This is not an acceptance of the annexation, it merely sends it back to the county commissioners. This is ordinance 1555-25. This is a first reading passed as an emergency. Do I have a motion to declare an emergency and waive the three readings? Mr. Gibson, do I have a second? Ms. Cole. By roll, Mr. Gibson. Ms. Cole. Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Staton. Got a, need a motion to adopt ordinance 1555-25. Mr. Meyer, there's our second.
Second.
Mr. Theobout. By roll, Mr. Gibson. Ms. Cole. Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Staton. Motion passed 5-1.
Zoning report for the, tonight's meeting. We're up to 216 zoning permits. Streamside, we have 16. Harvest Meadows, 91 for the year, for a total of 107. Zoning violations, still working on 10 in progress, with four of those being in court. Finally heard back from the Verizon for the last cell tower by the bridge. They said that there have been issues with the internet service provider with the connectivity, and they hope to have the site up by the end of the year. Zoning cases scheduled, November 24th is a public hearing for council for the Bundle Hill Preliminary Concept Plan. And on December 16th, there's a public hearing for the final development plan for the Sugar Ridge Baumann Development for their second phase of that development. That concludes my report. Yeah, I'll be sending that out this week. Yep.
At this time, this is my part, the mayor's part for this. I just want to say congratulations to the new members elected for the village council. And then also to the outgoing, I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you for stepping up like the people who stepped up and did what they did for being elected. I just want to say to everyone, thank you so very much for everything you've done for this village. And I know, we still, no matter what, we have to still work together as, as we are now. I mean, we just have to work together just to make a, have a bowl for the future for the village of Batavia. I also want to, the Christian Help Center, I'm sorry about my microphone, the Christian Help Center, the Christian Help Center. The Christian, oh, gosh. There's something really wrong with that one. The Christian Help Center will be hosting a free Thanksgiving dinner on Sunday, November 23rd. 500 people have already signed up for that, and I just want to say thank you to the Christian Help Center. I want to also mention for again, tomorrow, being Veterans Day, thank you to all the veterans who served our country honorably. And then also, for the Kiwanis Club, they also have the Field of Honor. There are four different places here, and I think three different places here in the Claremont County. You can go ahead and visit, and that supports our, our local veterans and our first responders. And I just want to say thank you to the Kiwanis Club for, for doing that. I think one's at West Claremont, one's at the Sheriff's Office, and another one, I think, is at Bethel Tate High School. Oh, Williamsburg, I'm sorry. And Bethel, thank you, there are four. The village will be hosting a Christmas in the Village on Saturday, December 6th. 5:00 PM, the carriage rides will begin. 6:00 PM, lighting of the manger. And 7 o'clock, Santa will be there to help light the Christmas tree. And since I have some, did you want to make sense, this is, okay, very good. I understand. I also, there'll be, there'll be items coming out on Facebook, and also, you've already taken the liberty to taking flyers to the businesses. Each business has been giving a flyer to, to welcome them, to say if they want to be involved with that, they can. The next appointment is, or the next issue is for the appointment for the fiscal officer, for the approval contract, and the legislation in part. I want to open it up to the council first. Go ahead, and do you have any questions for myself? I, myself and Mr. Staton were on that committee. There was a, there was a point where Mr. Geis was on that committee, but on the last, on the last meeting of the person physically, Mr. Geis was actually meeting with someone on the fire board, is that correct, Mr. Geis? Yeah, the fire, we had a fire board meeting, so I didn't think it would be fair that he would meet with the other person face-to-face, not knowing his other face-to-face with the person that was originally was scheduled. Do you have any questions for me? Okay. Go ahead, sir, read your line.
In this, obviously, we need to get them in as quick as possible to turn over for the year, right? So that's why we're...
It was, yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think we only have...
We already passed the additional funds a while ago.
Correct, correct. And Mr. Wait, again, thank you for, Mr. Wait, for being able, whoever, you know, like I said, for this person, for coming to fiscal officer, he, he needs to train them. I don't, I think 30 days is still maybe enough, but again, we'll, we'll see.
We'll see.
Depends on the individual, correct.
Mayor, I would like to point out something that came out of the fire board. The fire board's going through a very similar situation where they're replacing their fiscal officer, and they've had a little longer transition period in this. But something interesting came out of that is, while the new person is sitting with the current fiscal officer, they're also being sent out to some other fiscal officers to see how other places do things, see best practices, and I think it would be very important with the 50,000 that we already have budgeted, that we consider doing some of that, is let them learn the best practices in other areas. And then he also builds relationships with people he can call on if he needs help or something, who's really on the top of their game.
All right, we have a, we have a resolution 39025, we have first reading to pass an emergency. Can I have a motion to declare an emergency and waive the three readings? Do you have a second? Mr. Meyer. By roll, Mr. Gibson. Ms. Cole. Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Staton. Have a motion to adopt resolution 39025, which is agreeing to the employment contract with Mr. Russell.
I have a motion as we adopt, as we...
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
By roll, Mr. Gibson. Ms. Cole. Mr. Theobout. Mr. Stewart. Mr. Meyer. Mr. Staton. Okay. Moving on. I gave my October activity report to council, and now we've got some legislation for some wage increases for next year. These are basically cost-of-living wages that are, to keep up with inflation, and they're basically 5% increases. Yes. So I've got ordinance 1553-25, this is a third reading. Have a motion to adopt ordinance 15... Have a motion to adopt ordinance fifteen, I've got two numbers here, fifty-two, fifty-three. This is for the chief of police. Have a motion to adopt. Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Do you have a second, Mr. Gibson? By roll. Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Staton.
Yes.
Thank you. I've got a resolution adjusting the police officer's wage schedule for twenty twenty-six. Again, the same five percent. Can I have a motion to adopt resolution three eighty-three twenty-five?
So moved.
Mr. Gibson.
I'll second.
Ms. Cole. By roll. Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Staton.
Yes.
Got a resolution adjusting the public works employees, which is the street department, for twenty twenty-six. This is resolution three eighty-four twenty-five, a third reading. Can I have a motion to adopt resolution three eighty-four twenty-five?
So moved.
Mr. Theobout. Mr. Gibson. By roll. Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Staton.
Yes.
Excuse me. Got a resolution adjusting the wages for the administrative staff, which is Mr. Stewart and Kelly. This is resolution three eighty-five twenty-five, a third reading. Can I have a motion to adopt resolution three eighty-five twenty-five?
I'd like to make a motion to separate. The two items, the two items are not commensurate. One's an hourly employee, one's a salary employee, and I'd like to separate them into two separate items.
And they're both hourly.
They're they're both hourly. One is part-time, one's full-time.
Okay, for that reason. I'd like to separate one more administrative, one, one for the need for.
Okay. How do we do that, Mr. Mr. Moore? Do we amend to delete someone, or can we?
First, somebody assess the second is motion, at which point we can enter. You can delete one person and enter then a second. Excuse me, I'm now getting feedback. You can then propose a second resolution.
Well, you've got a, you've got a motion to separate, okay?
Hey, John.
Yes.
Can you do A and B?
Okay, we would call, we would call them A and B.
You can call them A and B.
Okay, well.
It'll be separation.
But. Motion to separate. By Mr. Staton. Is there a second to that? For lack of a second, motion fails. Now, I would need a motion to adopt resolution three eighty-five twenty-five.
So moved.
Mr. Theobout. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Gibson. By roll. Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Staton.
Staton.
Five oh one. Got a resolution adjusting the contract with Geis Consulting. This is a second reading.
I'd like to make a motion to table this until the first, uh, company in January, and as Geis Consulting did not enter into a contact with the, what is Batavia, but just based on just by the first, um, fiscal officer, as Geis Consulting, if Geis Consulting wants to enter into a contact, I'd do great identification, that's the main thing, so it's going to be the case.
We have a motion. Is there a second to the motion? Do we do that by roll, or is it? Okay. This is to delay the the second reading of Mr. Geis's contract until January of next year. So, Mr. Mr. Gibson.
No.
Ms. Cole.
No.
Mr. Theobout.
No.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
And Mr. Staton.
Yes.
Okay, it's four two, motion fails.
Great. It's looking for a reading.
Okay, so now we're back to a third reading on, well, I'm sorry, that was the second reading. Can we do a third reading then, or do we wait till next time?
Do it next month.
Next, next meeting, we have.
Do the third reading next month.
Right. We do have a a council meeting on the twenty-fourth because we've got a public hearing, so the third reading would be then.
Yes.
All right.
Is there a reason the public hearing needs to be on the twenty-fourth? Well, I come back to motion as we eliminate the second meetings for the month, for the end of the year. If there are pro-murder, think, all the pro-murder, if the second meetings were originally put in there to be deliberative in nature, not administrative, we're taking a vote. And I think we go where we meant to be. It should not be to speed things up, limit the public ability, become aware of issues and participating in the process. It's possible to be deliberate, and deliberate, that's what we're saying.
I don't think I would say, should you make reference, if we send out notice of that meeting?
It's been noticed because the meeting is not a half.
Yes, it's been published.
Have we notified people of the meeting and intention of meeting?
Yes.
We most certainly have. We're both prepared for.
Well, let's make a motion.
You've you've got a motion on the floor. Is there anyone wants a second, Mr. Staton's motion? The motion is to to eliminate the second meeting council this month and in December.
One second. This month and December or?
But I heard.
Well, the second one, the votes, yes, in November and December, second meetings.
I apologize. John, you had a right eye, sir. I thought you did good.
No, I still have to have the first.
Okay.
I'll leave a second.
Well, I, you don't, because let me not cancel out the meetings next year.
Okay, Ms.
Because the second meeting for the month.
Okay, Mr. Staton made a motion. Mr. Stewart.
Did you, did you get a picture on who would need it, I want in November? Is there like?
Well, he said because they made the notification of a public hearing. My concern is that this public hearing, I think, was through, you know, last year, we didn't have a second meeting. But now, as things are trying to get done, right here, they're meeting here before a new council comes in and has their way, which the public made very clear, that they didn't like what we were doing, I didn't know anything else, they didn't like the way we were doing. I think we need to slow down and allow for public participation by consultant, like, where we actually had some give and take over the night, allow the people to get involved. And it's unfortunate that the people were notified, but we can notify them again and move it to the December, if we have to do that for administrative reasons around here, we can certainly do it to protect the bulk of the people.
Just to dissent, I I would say, I'd rather have more opportunity, more people come forward, and then add an extra meeting, we could potentially, so it's not a, I prefer that, rather have people come to that meeting, discuss. So I'd say, going one more time, talk with them here, and then we can table anything. And I I probably like that way to do it, but I.
But not going to take administrative action, I'm fine with having a meeting for the purposes because meetings were originally approved for to come in and council to set and discuss. I've been on field for close to three months now.
Too low.
And the discussion that picks those up here, upon council member is minimal. That's not the way it used to be. Council members can vary opinions and they discuss, and they agree and disagree, but that part didn't matter. Everybody in the village gets represented, and things can't just go through and fix them all. There's no way everyone's answer agrees on anything.
We got a motion on it from our side.
Get.
Sorry. I didn't.
You're good.
Take your motion.
You know, and before we just had the motion, I just wanted to say one thing. I I hear, this is, I asked another previous member of the council before I was even on, what were the second meetings for? And because I never, and I apologize, and I want to apologize to the council and to the public right now, maybe it should have been just for discussionary, that for the last two years, maybe that I've dropped the ball on that. And then I, again, I apologize. But originally, that second, this council, and I know that council member was correct because that person doesn't forget anything. The reason for the meetings, the second meeting, was not legislative, it was just for the council to talk. That's what it was for. So I'm just just giving you my experience. That's that's what I was told by the by the council member, so that's all I can know, because I wasn't here on council at the time, but that's what I was told. Go ahead. Because I, sorry, second, there's a, and I don't know, John, or you wanted to say something, or anybody else that was on council at the time?
No, we got a motion on it. Move.
I just, I just know that I was elected to be here until the end of the year, so as an elected member of council, I'd like to have every opportunity to voice my opinion forward. Why can't the mayor go out here?
All right, we we we're taking a second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stewart. By roll. Mr. Gibson. Do you want to?
No.
Cancel second meetings?
No.
Ms. Cole, do you want to cancel?
No.
Mr. Theobout, do you want to cancel?
No.
Mr. Meyer, do you want to cancel?
No.
Mr. Stewart, I'm sorry, Mr. Stewart, I'm, you said no?
No.
Mr. Staton. Okay, motion failed.
Does Staton make motions without any, State, so I'll second?
There was never any, there was, moving on. We have a resolution adopting a cybersecurity program as mandated by the state of Ohio for the village of Batavia. This is a third reading. Can I have a motion to adopt resolution three eighty-seven twenty-five?
So moved.
Mr. Theobout.
I'll second.
Cole. By roll. Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Stewart.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Staton. We have a resolution three eighty-nine twenty-five, which designates Peoples Bank and Fifth Third Bank as depositories for public funds for the village of Batavia. This is a third reading. Can I have a motion to adopt? Mr. Gibson. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Theobout. By roll. Mr. Gibson.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Theobout.
Yes.
Mr. Staton. I'm sorry, Mr. Stewart, I couldn't read. Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Staton. Five oh one. That is all that I have.
Okay, thank you, couns- thank you, council. Other issues concerning the village? Mr. Okay, Mr. Moore. Okay, I didn't know if you had anything. Okay. Committee meeting and reports. Tuesday, November eighteenth, seven P M., next planning and zoning meeting. Thursday, November twentieth, six P M., finance committee. And then Monday, November twenty-fourth, seven P M., is a second regular council meeting. There will be a public heating on Bunnel Hill Development. Did we want a safety meeting?
Well, you had mentioned you wanted the police chief's recommendation to hire part-time to go to safety.
Safety. When is, when, when do you want to establish that meeting date?
It was supposed to have been last month.
Okay.
So whoever's on safety decide.
Chief, do you have an opinion on a date for us, end of year?
Uh, I'm, I'm available.
I guess we could do Tuesday, the second. Is that okay? Actually, hang on a second. What am I, why, I'm in December. Let's do, uh. I'm looking at where the other meetings fall, sorry. Uh, let's do the seventeenth. Is the seventeenth okay on Monday?
Yeah.
Good?
November the seventh.
November seventeenth. Earlier the better. Is that what you said?
Well, I can't get up at one thirty. We're.
We're trying to pick a time for the people who are on the committee, because she has to get up for working night shift.
It's a safety committee meeting, November seventeen.
Five P M.
Five P M.